Welcome, everybody, to the April 2, 2009 meeting of the Santa Barbara, City of Santa Barbara Planning Commission meeting. And Ms. Rodriguez, could you do a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Justice? Absent. Commissioner Jacobs? Absent. Commissioner Bartlet?
Here.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Thompson? Chair Larson?
Here. Thank you very much. I, the first thing I want to do is thank Vice Chair Addison for taking over in my unplanned absence. And I know he did a great job. The next thing is, I'm going to ask everyone to please turn off all your electronic devices. Texting, phones, Twitters, the works. Because otherwise, you'll have to buy us pizza. So, but it's very disruptive, and we actually can't use them up here because you can't tell what we're communicating about, so we ask that you also use them, not use them down there. Because we need to just be at this meeting, just us and you. Now, announcements in appeals? Mr. Cotto?
Yes. There will be a special meeting of the Planning Commission on Friday, May the 8th, 1:00, here in this chambers. And the two items that will be on for sure are Plan Santa Barbara update and Plan Santa Barbara EIR update. That's Environmental Impact Report update. There might be a couple of other items on that, I'm not sure yet. We're still up in the air on the agenda. We have had three appeals of staff hearing officer decisions since the last time I made this announcement. The first is 436 Corona Del Mar. It is a duplex and an interior yard modification. 1415 Mission Ridge, single-family house. It is another side yard setback. And 16, 618 Sempe Squall. It's a four-unit, low-income ownership condo project by Habitat for Humanity that had about seven modifications which are being appealed. That's all that I have.
Thank you very much. And next, we have public comment. And at this point in our meeting, if you wish to speak on anything that's not an agenda, on our agenda today, then you may come forward and have two minutes at the mic. And I have a slip here from Jim Caldwell. Is he here? Excuse me? Is that for an item? Oh, okay. Well, then, you'll just have to wait patiently. Thanks. So, anybody? Not seeing anybody, I'll close public comment. And we'll begin with a consent item, which is 412 and 14, 412 and 414. Anacapa? And we don't have a, we're not, would you like to waive the staff report? Or how do you want to do this?
Madam Chair, it's up to the commissioners. We had put this on consent calendar kind of as a signal from us to you that we thought it wasn't very controversial, but I think we may have misjudged that based on what happened on the site visit. So if you would like a staff report, we are prepared.
Then I think a staff report would be in order, please. Ms. Johnson?
Good afternoon, Chair Larson and Commissioners. The project before you today is on Anacapa Street between Haley and Gutierrez Street. It's, the existing site is 13,500 square feet, and they are proposing to subdivide that. So the discretionary applications today are a tentative subdivision map, dividing one lot into three lots, a public street waiver for a driveway that serves more than two lots, and development plan approval for 4,074 square feet of non-residential development. Proposed Lot 1 is approximately 4,760 square feet, and it's a mixed-use building on each lot. This particular lot has 1,780 square feet of non-residential square footage and a two-bedroom unit above. Open space is provided with 814 square feet on grade, 154 square feet on the second-floor patio, and 234 square feet on a roof deck. The parking is one residential space in a garage and two non-residential spaces, one of which is an ADA accessible space that is going to be shared by all three lots. Just on a side note, parking in the central business district for residential units is only one space per unit. That's why there's only one residential garage. Proposed Lot 2 is a little over 5,000 square feet, and they're proposing 1,756 square feet of non-residential development. And you can see how the open space is allocated. Again, more than 10% on the grade, excess private outdoor living space on the second floor, and a roof deck providing the common open area. Parking, one residential garage, and three non-residential spaces. Proposed Lot 3 is the smallest lot. It's 3,600 square feet, and it has only 538 square feet of non-residential development and a two-bedroom unit above. Again, it exceeds 10% of the required open space on the ground, exceeds the private outdoor living space requirement, and has the 234 square feet roof deck that is meeting their common open area requirement. Two residential gar, two spaces in a residential garage and two non-residential spaces. Under Measure E, this property has 6,375 square feet of existing non-residential development. It's considered vacant. I know there are a lot of structures and things stored on the lot, but none of those have building permits, and so the lot is still considered legally vacant. They also get 3,000 square feet allocated to them under minor additions category, and they're only proposing 4,074. So there's 2,031 square feet of excess or existing development rights remaining, which is going to be divided equally among the lots. General plan density allows for 12 units per acre, which would be one unit per every 3,630 square feet. Each of the lots exceeds that amount, so they're meeting general plan density by the standard method, not by variable. Access is provided to the site through a common driveway off of a one-way street, and they're providing all the required parking onsite. And they will be providing a reciprocal parking and access agreement. Under development plan, you would need to make findings that there's no increased need for affordable housing from, as a result of this project, and no adverse impact to water or sewer resources. And I discussed this in the staff report, that it does not adversely impact the water or sewer or increase housing needs for affordable units. The environmental analysts and staff reviewed the project and found it to be categorically exempt under the following sections. 15, 1,500, I screwed that up. 15-315 Minor Land Use Divisions, 15-303 for new construction of small structures. I did receive one email under public comment from a neighbor at 402 Anacapa, and her comment was basically about a view off of a private deck from inside her master bedroom. And after further looking at it, it doesn't look like it impacts it as much as she thought it did. So staff recommends that you approve the tentative subdivision map, public street waiver, and development plan, making the findings listed in Section 7 of the staff report, which is on pages 7 and 8. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Would the applicant care to make a few comments?
Madam Chair.
Could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Robin Donaldson.
Thank you.
I'm the architect and the owner of the project, developer of the project. Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'll move through this fairly quickly and try to key on maybe a few architectural elements that may be of interest. The, and today I have my family here, members of my office. There we go. Did everybody catch that? Yeah. The project is a project that I'm developing myself. I'm an architect here in town. The idea is to develop something that would be my office, some residences, and kind of create what I was hoping would be kind of a creative compound of like-minded professionals and people living there. I am planning that the last lot, the Lot 3 in the back, would actually be my own residence. So that project, the Lot 3, the way that particular unit's designed is to accommodate my family and so on. The, you're familiar with the site. I saw most of you at the site visit on the two days, and I appreciate everybody coming down. One of the things about the site is that it is an undeveloped, relatively undeveloped block of Santa Barbara. We are a bit of a pioneering project on this block. It comprises, obviously, a majority of one-story, but there's a fair amount of two-story and so on. This is a model that we did actually of the block to show our project here, the three buildings we're proposing on the three lots. We actually modeled an approved project that is a Planning Commission-approved condo project, though has not, I understand from the owner, has not received final BAR approval. And I'm not sure when they're going to go ahead, but I thought it was relevant to model that in the case of the block. There's a large building here that's been here for a number of years, two-story on the corner and so on. Zooming in on this a little bit, sometimes it's easier to understand the layout of the project by, this is two-story portion down below. Here is a commercial portion with a residence up above. We have basically an elevator and stair tower here that comes up to a rooftop deck here. We have a large, relatively large kind of open space here between the two buildings. The second building is organized just the way the first building is. The third building in the back has a commercial piece at the bottom down here, forms another courtyard back here. There's two residential-covered parking spots in this building, the commercial spots out front of the building. And then the second floor is basically bedrooms, and the third floor is a living area. There's a deck here off of the third-story living area, and there's a roof deck here with an access stair to the roof deck there. This is the site plan, and it shows, this is a property line here, property line here, divided into three pieces. What our plan is, is that there would be a shared reciprocal parking agreement with this handicap parking spot here. There's also handicap accessibility all the way through the site, down the side here. I've held each of the buildings five feet from the property line so that you can actually walk around and landscape. I want to landscape around the edge of the building here. And you have accessibility all the way through, back to here, and all the way into this unit and into the commercial space in the back here. Two residential spots here, one commercial spot here for this, for this building. The property line's here, there'll be a parking agreement that this spot here actually services this building for the commercial parking. You have one, two, three spots for this building. The front building obviously has the handicap spot next to us, and then has these two other commercial spots, and then a residential parking spot there. I've tried to maximize as much as possible the open space on the site, and by bringing the buildings back from the property line, the typical configuration in that block, obviously, under the CM zoning, most of the buildings come right up against the property line. And when you're in the site, you can see how that's the case all around our, our project. This is the total open space. We have 13,000-square-foot lot, and we have 2,500 square feet of open space. We're trying to keep as much open space as possible. We want it to be as green and, and as, as, I guess it's a little bit unlike what's typical down there, is what we're kind of hoping to do. We're looking at doing grass treat here, so as you walk along the street here and walk along the sidewalk, you'll have grass here. We have planters in front of the building here, landscaping proposed against the building here, and landscaping proposed against the building here. And this is just blowing up that, that front here, which shows where the grass treat is being proposed here, the planters along the front here, and the handicap, kind of the walkway here that goes back through the project. This is a, a street elevation that shows the disposition of the general, of the buildings along the street. This is at scale. This is showing the proposed building next door, our proposal. This particular view is taking the long, cutting the long way down the site, so you see each of the buildings. And these are these courtyard areas between the various buildings. We have another building adjacent to our site that backs upright to it right there. And this is just zooming in on, this is the, this is taken from the elevations that we had from the approval. I think Commissioner Bartlet probably recalls when this went through at the ABR, and we followed that with some interest. At the ABR, there were comments about us keeping our building at least, this, I believe was 41 feet 8 inches, keeping it at that height or lower. And that's what we've done here. This is the elevation of the first building, which is obviously in your package. The floor plan here, commission may be interested in the roof plan. This is the open space on the, on the roof here. We've reserved the rest of the roof for photovoltaics. It's one of the reasons we're doing a flat-roof building with parapets. We've already have a proposal laid out for the photovoltaics on each of the building's roof, and they almost, almost meet the needs. If we're very efficient with our commercial use of electricity and so on, that we'll be able to meet a good deal of the use of the building with standard photovoltaics on the buildings.
About two more minutes.
Okay, I'm almost there. Second building's basically the same as the first, third building in the back. And I guess the, the main thing about this building, I think in plan, for the commission to understand, we have the commercial space here, two residential parkings here. This garage space is deeper, so it kind of coincides with this commercial space entry here, bedroom level on the second level, living level on the upper level that opens onto a private open space here. And then we have a roof deck proposed on the, on the roof plan. And I think that's it. And those are the story poles that were up until end of the day on Tuesday.
And that's it?
That's it.
Thank you very much. At this time, I don't want to forget to ask, has anyone on the commission had any ex parte communication with the applicant regarding this project? Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have one phone discussion and email exchange with the applicant. He was seeking a recommendation for who to potentially hire to erect the story poles. So that was the discussion that we had.
Great. Thank you very much for that disclosure. And now, since we're going through this sort of, the way we're going through it, I'll open the public hearing. So anyone wishing to make comment on this project, public comment, there are some green slips in the back of the room. You can fill them out. At this point, you can come up and speak and then fill it out. So if you'd like to speak for or against this project, please feel free to come up. The microphone's yours. Welcome, sir. And, and please come close to the microphone and state your name.
Ed Manon.
Ed Manon.
Is that Mrs. Lodge over there? Howdy. How are you? I haven't seen you in many years. I just wanted to speak in general about developing anything at this particular point in time. This, it seems to me, when I walk around the neighborhood, I see a lot of for lease and sale signs on properties. It seems to me that you guys need to figure out a way to lease them, rent them, and make money with them. I don't understand why we're considering putting new things in the landscape at the present time. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Would you please fill out a green slip in the back? And thank you so much. Appreciate it very much. Anyone else? With that, I'll close public comment, and the matter's to the commission. Any questions? We'll start with Mr. Bartlet, please.
I have a quick question for the applicant on the... Madam Chair, Commissioner Bartlet, that would not be correct. It's two-bedroom units on the front two lots, and it's a three-bedroom in the back.
Thank you. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Donaldson, on the site visit on Monday, you indicated yourself a little bit of surprise at how high the story poles were. Are you considering bringing the building down? You do have high ceilings in those units. And I think particularly, you were talking about the rear unit, the one yourself.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Lodge? Yes, I am. If I may, I'll show you guys a slide that I prepared. And that is true, when I got to the site, I saw the story poles for the first time, and particularly the rear building. What we're proposing to do in the submittal that you guys have, the rear building, which is this building here, we have 12 feet floor-to-floor. We had a 10-foot plate on the, on the residential and a 12-foot plate on the top. And it, it got to a point where, when I saw it on the side, and also just considering the cost of building it, I want to bring it down. And what I'm proposing to do is basically bringing it down four feet, four feet 6 inches, by getting to a 10-foot plate, an 8-foot plate on, a 10-foot plate on the commercial level, 8-foot plate on the bedroom level, and a 11-foot plate on the residential on the top, which basically nets out at four, four feet.
Thank you. And then on the frontage on Anacapa Street, just, there is some variation in the setback. It doesn't seem to be a great deal. Could you go over what it is?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Let me go this direction, right there. The, we have a planter proposed here, and a planter across the front here that comes back here, and this is glass here, and then the return here with the grass treat here.
So is it the full three floors right on Anacapa?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lodge? No. This, this portion here is actually one-story. This portion here is actually two-story, and the three-story portion starts back here.
Okay, thank you.
At that point.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Thompson, please.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. I was a little surprised when I read the Measure E, square footage, the allocation from the small additions category. And I'd always kind of thought that small additions meant small additions onto an existing building. Apparently, that's not the way. Would you go into that a little bit more and describe how we apply small additions category to the Measure E limitations?
Chair Larson, Commissioner Thompson. When Measure E was first adopted, that's exactly what it was. Small additions were supposed to be additions to buildings, but they could also, well, actually, that's not true. It could be both, because you could, you could, you could have a, let's say you had a building on a lot, you could build a new building with that 3,000 square feet of minor and small addition. It wasn't always had to be an addition to the building. The change that happened in about 1994, 1995 is that, well, it used to be that you could only use your vacant square footage first, and then you'd have to build something with that. And then you could come back and build and use your next 3,000 square feet as small addition. And we went through a process to change that, to say that you could, you could, you could use it all at once. So it's always been that you could build a new building with it, or you could, you know, you could demolish a building and then take that square footage, the existing square footage that you had, and add the 3,000 square feet to it. That's always been the case. But there was a change to allow vacant and small to go together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Thompson. So now the matter is to the commission. How about comments? Anyone? Thank you. Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an unusual solution. We don't see, I don't think we have seen this very often, if ever, that we're going with a parcel map, the separate lots for, for a project of this sort. So this is definitely a novel approach. I certainly appreciate the, the benefits of this not being condos. That is, adds another ingredient of, of inextricability. I did have, I guess there is a question I have to Mr. Donaldson. If your office is going to be there, you're in the big unit in the back, is that space in the back big enough for your, that isn't big enough for your, for your firm, is it? Are you going to use, use other spaces on the premises?
Chair Larson, Commissioner White, the hope is to use the middle building for the office, a commercial space in the middle building. So I'm, I'm anticipating retaining ownership of, much as possible, of the project.
All right. Neat. So if I, I, I can support the project. I feel, I thought Ms. Lodge's question about the, the front landscaping, it feels a little scrawny to me. I know we've been having interesting conversations about having a little more open space on the, as the, in all of the height initiative conversations, that the notion of having a little more open space in the, in the front has been a, a topic. And if I had my ideal on this project, it would have a little more landscaping in the front. The one comment I wanted to make is that this is in a CM zone, is that right?
Correct.
And what I would want to have is, I wouldn't want the, this residential use, this sort of very soft use for a CM zone, to then become the neighborhood compatibility issue. In other words, okay, now we can't have a rendering plan, I know that can't happen in the CM zone, but there can be animal hospitals or things that are a little, might have some compatibility concerns with an upscale residential unit. But yet, I feel as if we, we owe the people next door, the neighbors. We have a dearth of industrial, shall we call it, property in this city, and I want to protect it a little bit, because we do need to have back of house somewhere. So in the CCNRs, I would like to see something that would say, this building is not going to be insisting upon that the properties next door be like them, or have, the normal CM uses could occur next door, and that would be obviously designed the best way possible. But still, you would be stuck a little bit with perhaps some, some neighbor concerns in the future. I just feel like that, you're a little bit the guest in this, in this zone district. So I'd ask that we, when we get to conditions, that that be considered, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I think that's the only comment I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very pleased, actually, to see the, although it's unusual, to see the three lots and the three separate buildings. This means that the residential, for the residential units in particular, there can be windows all the way around, and they can be much more livable. Also, there is enough space that canopy trees can be planted, and it makes it a, a much softer project. And I understand the issues with it being a CM zone, but I think this is an appropriate use. I too would like to see a little bit bigger planter, perhaps, in the front, enlarging the one that is there. Mr. Donaldson, what is the overall height of the front building? I think you said it's 40, 41?
Chair Larson, Commissioner Lodge, the front building is 37 feet 3 inches is the tallest main parapet around the building.
Okay. Okay, and that part is set back, it looks like it's about set back 10 feet or so.
It's actu, it's actually five feet on the side yard.
That's fine. No, I mean from the front.
Oh, from the front, yeah. It's about 10 feet in that front. Actually, this is eight, right here, 7 feet 12, it's 8 feet, this distance right here.
Okay.
Which is that. And that is the portion that is at 37.3.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are my only comments.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I've had a chance, being on ABR prior to Planning Commission, to not only see earlier iterations of this project, one which was much grander, although it was still three buildings, but in a very different and larger configuration. But also, we approved the adjacent project, which Robin has modeled in his 3D images that he had on, on the screen. So I know what's potentially coming next door. It's been previously approved, maybe permits have not been pulled yet. So I think that the approach that's been taken on this project is a welcome addition to the neighborhood by separating and creating the three distinct buildings, allowing the breathing space around them with landscape, with windows and light and ventilation. breathing space around them with landscape, with windows and light and ventilation. So I think that's a good attribute. And I think the way you've sequentially gated the project as you get deeper into the project creates a sense of security in an area that really isn't a very secure neighborhood now. So I think the way you've organized the residences above the commercial spaces will actually work quite well. And your residence, to me, makes sense, having the two levels of residential above, because you're surrounded on three sides by adjacent buildings. So I think the organization of the project is great. I like the fact that it is not condominiums. It will all be individually owned. And the creative use of the conjunctive parking agreements, so that you're not asking for any parking modifications, I think speaks well for the project. And I appreciate the fact that you've shared your thoughts on perhaps adjusting the rear building. I was fine with it, but I know others perhaps had issues. My only comment is that I think as we move forward, depending on what happens with building heights come November, that this project typifies, though, what we will be seeing. You're going to see three-story buildings with flat roofs trying to be sustainable. We're not going to be seeing as many three-story buildings with tile roofs. So this is kind of what we're getting, and it meets the rules, and it meets the future rules. And one other suggestion in here, I think we need to modify the conditions of approval on... Starts on page nine and runs over to page 10. I think we need to match the holidays, to add the new holiday that the city has put in the list for Caesar Chavez Day, which is missing on this particular project. But I can certainly support the project, and I appreciate the fact that it's coming forward with no modifications. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. All righty, Mr. White.
Thank you. Two things. One is a question. I noticed on the page four of the conditions of approval that it speaks to off-site detention. And I'm wondering if you can describe for me what that... To what does that refer?
Madam Chair, Commissioner White, off-site retention?
Detention, yes.
Off-site detention? I don't know what that refers to. We have onsite detention and retention.
Probably in about 10 years.
And six... Item six, two, three-quarters of the way down. Off-site detention. Do we see it? Should he on? Is that what... And you do have onsite detention?
Yes, we do.
Okay. That's probably it, then. All right. And then I wanted to make a comment to my esteemed colleague about roofs. And one of the components of the height initiative is it refers to building... The definition of building height as being subject to... It can be defined by council. So that is not part of the proposed charter amendment. And of course, as you and I know, we've worked in the county where building height is defined differently. And I frankly think that that's... That flexibility, just that concern that you raise, I think would get addressed should the height initiative approve. I just... I think it's a... This town needs to have more opportunities for tile. Thank you.
And Ms. Lodge?
Well, I would just like to point out that Mr. Donaldson has almost three feet more than he could go in height. Didn't you say it was 37 feet high, the front building? 37 and three inches?
Yeah, Chair Larson, Commissioner Lodge, the... There is a port... The stair enclosure portion is 43.2, but the overall parapet to the building is 37.2.
Okay.
Is there something that you saw?
No, it's just that you would have... Excuse me. You would have the ability to have a sloping roof, is all I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
That's it? Well... Oh, I just want to make a very short... I didn't ask about the leads certification, if you're going for a certain level. But I have been doing a lot of research on solar panels lately and foldable tacks. They even have peel and stick. Can't believe what's coming out now. So I'm hoping very much that this... That you're going to look for a certain level of lead in this, and that, you know, you'll take the lead on your street for that.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Larson. May comment on that for a second. I mean, one of my aspirations for the project is to do a demonstration project, in a sense, that I can bring clients there, that the building... The building forms may be relatively simple, but I want the technology of the buildings and all of the aspects of it to be really an exemplary building. That's the... That's what we're hoping to do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay, I would move to approve the project with the findings as outlined in our staff report, supporting the tentative subdivision map, the development plan, with the comments that the Commission appreciates the applicant's notion to reduce the height of building number three by approximately four feet from the package that was submitted to the Commission. And with changes to the conditions of approval, item six on page four, to change the comment of off-site detention to onsite detention, and the conditions of approval on page 10 to add the Caesar Chavez Day holiday into the holiday schedule.
It's already there, according to Commissioner Addison.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Thompson. And lower the height?
I mentioned that already.
Oh, you mentioned that, sorry. Okay.
To the maker of the motion?
Yes.
I had requested that... I believe that there are CCNRs for this project, and I would ask that the CCNRs include something to the effect of, and may even look to staff to help us with wording, that adjacent uses that are consistent with the CM zone, that this project won't be objecting to uses that are consistent with the CM zone or some such thing.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Vincent?
I'd like to speak to that suggestion. I think it would be appropriate to include in the recorded conditions for each of the three lots that acknowledge the allowed CM zone... Or acknowledge the CM zone, acknowledge the allowed uses within the CM zone. I think it would be inappropriate, though, to muzzle the comments. You know, I believe it's actually a First Amendment issue. It'd be to say, you can't complain about a proposal goes a little too far. So I would recommend that the recorded condition acknowledge the allowed uses, refer to the allowed uses in some manner, but... And that they acknowledge that they are in a CM zone, but at the same time, a mixed-use project is also an allowed use of the CM zone. And so I think that would be the appropriate balance between the property owners.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Ms. Lodge to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Vincent, sort of in the nature of a buyer beware kind of part of the CCNRs?
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, the zoning is... I mean, there are so many disclosures when you purchase a piece of property in the first place. This is... This is an added element. It would just be one more place where a property owner would have a chance to notice. By the way, I'm in a particular zone, and there is the potential for certain uses next door. Even without this, the zoning would be part of the zoning information report that the city requires for transfers of property anyway. So a lot of this topic is already covered. I would say, in some manner, this is just one more step. It's a little redundant, but it's the... Because the zoning information report already puts every property owner on notice of the zoning of the property that they're purchasing.
So I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. You have a nice project, and, boys, you did great. You stayed awake, paid attention. We're really proud of you.
Thank you very much, the Commission.
Thank you. Yes, and this can be appealed to City Council within 10 days. Thank you. Our next item is a discussion item, U.S. 101 Improvement Project Update. So as you speak to this item, please introduce yourselves at the microphone for our benefit and the benefit of Ms. Rodriguez. And we have a...
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'm here today to present an update to the Highway 101 Improvements Project. Coastal Development Permit was approved back in December 2004. One of the conditions of approval in that conditional use permit... Sorry. Coastal Development Permit required that there be an annual update before the Planning Commission. The last update we held before the Planning Commission was in February 2008. Since then, substantial progress has been made. Construction has begun. And I have the applicant's team here to present more details of the progress. We have Mr. David Beard of Caltrans. He's the project manager. Mr. Fred Luna, SB CAG Project Manager. Mr. Michael Sendecky, the Caltrans Environmental Specialist. And Kirsten Ayers of Ayers &amp; Associates, who will be providing a presentation. All of us here are available to answer any questions you may have. Then I'd like to turn this presentation over to Kirsten Ayers.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ayers?
Which is this one you want?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
Well, we're pleased to be here today. We've had a lot of progress, as you've probably seen. And we're going to walk you through some brief updates. This project, the Highway 101 Operational Improvement Project between Milpus and Hot Springs, is the largest Caltrans construction project so far in Santa Barbara County, soon to be superseded. We'll tell you a little bit about that at the end as well. It's currently funded by Proposition 1B funds, which are state funds, and then, of course, the current Measure D funds as well. It's a project that's being put on by the city, Caltrans, and the Santa Barbara County Association of Government, so it's a joint project. This right here is the overview map of the project. As you can see, it's approximately two miles, and it runs from Milpus Street south to the entrance to Montecito here. We go about a half a mile past Hot Springs-Cabrio intersection. There are a variety of project improvements with this project. We're going to be improving six bridges. The overall construction timeframe is approximately four years, and we started in July of 2008. Here's a photo, and many of you were with us at the project opening. So far in the first stage of construction, we've begun work on the southbound on- and off-ramps at Milpus Street, Sycamore Creek Bridge improvements, northbound Highway 101 merge lane between Cabrillo and Salinas, the Montecito Roundabout, as well as Old Coast Highway sidewalks, the Tennis Stadium sound wall, and the Casique Street undercrossing. I'm going to take you on a quick photo tour. We're going to start down here on the south side by the new Milpus ramp improvements. We're going to move south to Montecito, jump up to the north side, and then end up here by Milpus. So this right here shows you the improvements. This is the new hook-off ramp under construction. This right here is the upgraded new Milpus southbound on-ramp, and progress is going very, very well. We will be opening this in the next few weeks, which is great. This shows you the other end of that ramp, so the hook-off ramp curves around this way. This is looking back towards Milpus. You can see the expanded section here. This is the on-ramp that's been updated. Here we are down at Sycamore Creek Bridge. This shows you mid-construction progress of the new bridge portion for Stage 1, which is down here on the zoo side. We've got two more portions to widen as well. We're jumping up here now to the Montecito Roundabout area, and this is ongoing construction in the Montecito Roundabout. That project will take approximately a year to build, so we're looking at through November 2009 for the roundabout completion. This moves us along northbound. We're right here at the Tennis Stadium sound wall, which you can see right here. The footings are in place, and now they're beginning work on the upper portion of the structure, which includes the new floodgates, as well as the block wall construction portion. In front of the wall, we've got new drainage features as well, so there'll be a new drainage channel. And then the merge lane northbound will get off at Salinas here. This brings us back up to the Casique Street undercrossing right here at the northbound Milpus off-ramp. As you can see, they've made a lot of progress. The abutments for the undercrossing are built. They're working on the retaining walls, as well as the base for the upgraded Milpus northbound off-ramp right now. In addition to the road improvements, there is also wetland mitigation at Sycamore Creek. Under the coastal development permit, a multi-agency group was asked to identify a location. That location was chosen as Sycamore Creek near the zoo. An additional coastal development permit was issued for the mitigation site in December of 2006, and the wetlands were constructed at the end of last year in the fall. You can see here a picture of the mitigation area. We have a lot of information under the transportation management plan to get information about the construction out. On the road, we're using changeable message signs to denote changes in construction staging. We have the Freeway Service Patrol, which is the rotating tow truck service to clear any accidents as quickly as possible. We have a double fine zone that is in place. The speed limit is at 55. We work with CHP ongoing to make sure that the project is safe, safely being built. We also work with emergency responders in the area. This two-mile stretch is a little bit unique in terms of emergency response, because it has overlapping response zones. So we've got the Santa Barbara City Police and Fire. We've got Montecito Fire out of the county. We've also got the sheriffs, CHP, and ambulance, and things like that. So we work with all of those agencies together to make sure they understand the routing, any changes in construction staging that affect them as well. There have been some situations where a fire does have to reroute, but we've worked with them in advance of that. We're also planning to start up Highway Advisory Radio. This is new to our area. It's a specific radio station, AM radio station, that will be construction-only information, and that will be starting later up in the spring. We've also installed new traffic cameras with this project. One is installed currently at Milpus. In about another year, we'll have one in the Cabrillo Boulevard area. Those are online, live traffic feeds, so if you want to see what's going on in a certain area, you can pull those up on the website and view live shots. We also have the 24-hour project hotline, which is in English and Spanish. You can call the hotline anytime and get construction information. It's updated every week, again, in English and in Spanish. It also provides opportunities. If you have a question, you can leave a question, and we'll call you back. We have the overview piece, which you have a copy of here in front of you, as well. It's in English and Spanish. It has all the maps and the detours for the first year of construction. This went out to about 31,000 people, residents and businesses in the area from Santa Barbara down to Carpinteria. It's been very successful. We've received a lot of positive feedback from people who receive this, as well as people are keeping it around, and they're still referring to the detours. We're still getting feedback cards from the middle of the brochure. People have a new question as construction moves forward, so that's going well. We also have the project website at sbroads.com. We have approximately 6,000 people who visited the website. We send out weekly email updates as well. We've done a variety of business resident homeowner outreach. We've had over 250 updates either in person, at community... We've had over 250 updates either in person, at community meetings, through the emails as well. We've actually sent out more than a weekly email at this point, as construction's been progressing so quickly. We've had to do more than one a week on a number of occasions. We also have alternative transportation programs built into the construction project under the Curb Your Commute program, and this is going on. You may have seen, Tuesday night, they just launched the second year, so it's successful, very successful so far. We had a kickoff symposium, where we had 120 business leaders pledge to participate in the program through their companies and individually. This program offers trip rewards, which is another component that was launched in March and April, but the idea is that it's a one-stop shop for all the alternative transportation options that are out there to help reduce congestion during the construction of the project. The commute challenge, as I mentioned, was just kicked off again. They also have put Wi-Fi on the Coastal Express, so you can work while you commute, or you can just play around on the Internet, if you'd like, for free. There's also a carpool-for-cash incentive as well that was launched in February of I did want to give you a brief update on the Cabrillo Boulevard undercrossing under Union Pacific Railroad. This is the multipurpose path connection that will connect the path by the Bird Refuge up along Cabrillo Boulevard into Montecito. The team has been working diligently on this portion of the project as well. It's technically a separate portion of the project, but we anticipate it will be built during the same timeframe, so from a public perspective, we've included it together because it'll all be construction in the same area relatively. So SB CAG and the city are funding preliminary design. Caltrans is responsible for the environmental analysis, and SB CAG is leading the design through consultants. Of late, they've had very good dialogue with Union Pacific representatives. There was a brief lull in the project for a while, as Union Pacific staff changed. Currently, two alternatives are being considered. One is a bridge replacement, and the other one is a tunnel under the existing bridge. For the bridge replacement, there are three options currently for the bridge replacement. The team hopes to have a preferred alternative selected by later in the spring of this year, and then the detailed design will be 2010, 2011, with construction 2011, 2012, of course, depending on which alternative is selected. That covers the main update for the Milpus-to-Hot Springs project. I did briefly want to mention the three other widening projects that are coming up, down the road, so to speak. We've got the Muscle Shoals-to-Carpenteria widening project, which is from Ventura up to Carpenteria Creek. That will be funded with Proposition 1B funding, and construction is slated to begin in 2011. That's the three lanes, basically runs from Muscle Shoals up to Carpenteria Creek. There's the next phase of widening, which is in Carpenteria. The two bridges need to be widened, so the freeway can actually fit underneath. That's at Linden and Casitas Pass. The project also includes local street improvements for the Carpenteria area. The final portion of the widening project is called the HOV project. It's the carpool lane project. It runs from Carpenteria to Montecito. It's being funded by Proposition 1B, as well as Measure A. That's still in preliminary design and moving into environmental review to come. So that gives you a brief update of our project moving from two lanes to three lanes, from Santa Barbara to Montecito, and the team is here to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. There was an issue, I recall, when this got started with the railroad and going underneath the railroad, when we were doing the Sycamore Creek rehabilitation, I think, wasn't it? Was it Sycamore Creek, or there was something? There was one of the railroad undercrossings that was an issue, and the railroad wasn't willing to do anything about it. And the potential was that even though we fixed the flow going underneath the 101, we still had a problem. Has there been any resolution in that?
Chairman Larson, Commissioner Thompson, that is going to be resolved with a future project that will be coming before you. That railroad bridge is over Sycamore Creek. It is not a part of this project--
No, I knew it wasn't part of the project, but it had an impact--
But we are working to bring another project before you that will result in the widening of that bridge and the area north of Highway 101 for two or three blocks, where there'll be additional widening. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, so something is in work. It's just out there in the future somewhere.
Correct.
And that brings me to my other question. I know you said the estimated completion for the railroad undercrossing, 2011 and 2012. What about the overall project minus the railroad undercrossing? Did I miss that?
Commissioner Larson and Chairman Thompson-- I'm sorry, the other way around. Chairman Larson-- Larson and Commissioner Thompson. The overall project is on track, so we're on schedule. The initial timeframe has always been four years of construction. We're looking very good. We're not going to go above that yet to say that we're going to finish early, but things are looking very, very good at this point, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. White? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Bartlet, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question on the zoo sound wall that was eliminated. I think that was in the prior update that you gave us. Has anything else been added in its place, or that wall just went away, period, and that's the extent of it? Okay, thank you.
And I, too, have a question. I'd like to know what the appearance of the sound wall is at the tennis court. What type of sound wall are you using? What is that going to look like for us?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I am David Beard, the project manager for Caltrans for this project. So the sound walls that are proposed were worked out with the design review team at the city, members of the Architectural Review Board, Historic Landmarks Commission, and what was developed was a wall that has a stucco finish to it, has evenly spaced pilasters at 40 feet, and stone across the top of it. And so that's kind of an unusual appearance for sound walls. I think it's going to look very nice.
Thank you very much. I was very concerned about that. And landscape will be ample?
Yes, every available bit of space that's left over is set aside for landscaping.
Thank you. Thank you. And I have a question for someone, although this is not exactly within the boundaries of that, but I'm noticing in general that there's a lot of landscaping being lost along our-- just north of all this. There are vines being killed off on overpasses that have been charming for years. Lots of change occurring to the landscape along 101 that we are accustomed to seeing. So I just want to make, and it'll be comment, not a question, I just am very concerned for the change and for our loss of local character as people pass through Santa Barbara on the 101. So any comments, folks?
One, Madam Chair.
Mr. White?
I just, I have gotten, somehow I was gotten on the email list, and I'm finding that those emails are very informative. And I also live right in proximity to the Milpus Street area there, so it's definitely-- I'm right between Milpus and Hot Springs, so it's really helping to guide me on what's going on, so that part of it is at least working, as far as I can see.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to congratulate the project team for doing an excellent job of keeping people informed and for keeping the traffic moving while the construction's going on. They seem to be going out of their way to keep people informed, as you, I am also on the email list, and that's doing an excellent job of weekly updates and all of the other methods that are being used to keep people updated. I think it's helping to keep some of the backup off of some of the impacted intersections, but also keeping all of the travel lanes open has been helpful. And I'd close with one question that's maybe sort of a downer. Who's responsible for graffiti abatement in the construction zone, which I see increasing all the time? Is the city responsible, or Caltrans, or who?
During the construction, a contractor is responsible, and they've been very good. When the projects are deemed complete and turned over, then whoever owns them afterwards, and it's a combination in this project of who owns what, then the owner is responsible at that point forward. But as you know, graffiti in our area is an ongoing issue--
Yeah, they seem to be getting ahead of the graffiti abatement process recently.
Luckily, we've, as always, had a lot of graffiti. This project is no exception. They've done a very good job of trying to get the graffiti off of the signs that are informative, but I'll follow up as well with--
Well, not only the signs, but even their, on the concrete barriers out next to the travel lanes, so that's really difficult to even get somebody out there to take care of it. They must be taking their chances with the cars in the early mornings, but it is becoming more noticeable.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Cotto.
If the Commission wouldn't mind me asking a question. When will the Milpus southbound off-ramp on-ramp be open?
The question of the hour. Actually, we've got good news, which is that we're making very good progress. We will be opening the southbound Milpus on-ramp soon, likely in the next week or so. I'm going to reserve a date just to make sure that we don't miss our date, but we are about a month early in opening that. We had initially, as a project team, proposed ramp closures at a certain point. Prior to even construction starting, we were able to reduce those in half, the length of the ramp closure. So the team worked very, very hard with the local community to reduce those and restructure construction staging, even before construction started. We have worked continuously with the contractor to push them and offer incentives in the contract as well to speed up construction as much as possible. We're looking at about a month ahead of even the reduced closure schedule for the southbound Milpus on-ramp. Additional ramps, so we also have the new hook-off ramp, that's going to be opening a bit after that. And then it also looks like we'll have additional good news on the opening of other ramps that are closed as well, so things are going very, very well. I also neglected to mention, but I do want to mention, that we will be shifting traffic over, it looks like, next week onto the newly paved portion, which is the new third lane southbound. You won't yet see three lanes, because we still have to work on Sycamore Creek Bridge in the middle there, but things are going very, very well. And in terms of schedule, we've been working very diligently with the contractor, as well as the community, to make sure that not only is progress being made on the road construction project, but also that we're minimizing disruptions to the traveling public and to the neighbors and the businesses in the area as much as possible. So we've got good news all around so far.
Thank you. Can you tell me about how many people have actually been stopped for speeding? I mean, people go fast through there. I drive 55, and they're all honking at me.
Well, as you know, we recommend 55. I don't have the numbers of the amount of people who have been stopped, but I will tell you that the CHP is very diligent in monitoring that. We worked with them prior to construction on the double fine zone, and so they've been enforcing that ever since the signs have been up as well, so.
Great. Well, I always am concerned for the well-being of the Caltrans workers, so folks out there, please, give them a break. All right, thank you very much. And, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, as one of the original members of the 101 Subcommittee, it's great to see the progress that's occurred and see it actually come to life. I had a couple of questions, so if perhaps you could explain a little bit, sort of the interim operational sequencing, if you will, of the Hot Springs roundabout area. I noticed lately there's like a paved bypass road that has been put in. Since that's going to take a year to build, will traffic coming down Hot Springs be detoured onto Old Coast Highway, so that you have the roundabout area to work in? And then, adjunct question to that, I know the Subcommittee was wrestling with what to do with the big transmission power pole that's in the middle of the roundabout area that's still there, even though they've been doing a lot of utility work. What was the final outcome of trying to get that removed or relocated?
Let me start with your first portion with the roundabout construction. The staging for the roundabout construction will be shifting around, so we're in, if you look at the roundabout, we've got subsections, and they just happen to be four, four subsections. We're in the current first stage of the roundabout construction right now. The portion that you mentioned, which is the new paved portion from Hot Springs to Old Coast Highway, traffic will be shifted over to that portion in the next stage of construction. We will continue to have the lanes open on the streets, so Coast Village, Old Coast Highway, Cabrillo, Hot Springs will all be open. But as you'll see out there today, you've got two stop sign intersections. We'll still have two stop sign intersections throughout the majority of construction. It looks like the next phase of roundabout construction will be getting very shortly. In that stage, the intersections will actually be shifted towards Santa Barbara, same general area, but towards Santa Barbara, so that we can work on building the rest of the roundabout. In terms of that utility pole that you mentioned, as we shift the traffic over, we're then able to have the utility company come in. A new pole is going to be put up, so that the pole is not in the middle of the roundabout when we're finished. It will be over on the side by Bonds. There will be a new pole, but that will happen in the next stage as well. Did that hit all of them?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. All right? Any other questions? Any other comments? Well, we thank you very much for your time and for your update, and for your emails. Great. I don't know either, but it's nice to see it appear. Thank you. Thank you very much. And our next item is the item of Mr. Stephen Folsditch, City Housing Program Supervisor, requesting that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the City Council regarding the proposed amendments to the city's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And the presentation?
Chairman Larson, members of the Commission--
Welcome. Again.
Thank you. I'm here today to present the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Amendment, environmental review portion, and Mr. Stephen Folsditch is here as the proponent of the project and agent for the city. The draft initial study has been prepared and was circulated for review on the 18th of February this year. A PC Planning Commission hearing was held on March 19th, and the public review period ended on March 20th. The comments that were received are addressed in the final mitigated negative declaration, and I have below a summary of the responses and the comments that were received below. The City Council may in the future adopt the final mitigated negative declaration and approve the project. Just to quickly go over the basics of the project, it amends the existing Inclusionary Housing Ordinance to apply to 1 to 9 units, sorry, 2 to 9 units. It previously only applied to greater than 9 units. The money could be used for construction, amongst other uses, for administration or for purchasing already constructed units. We, in the initial study, had to make some assumptions based on prior data to come up with an analysis of what the project might result in, and those assumptions resulted in us coming up with an estimate for the number of units that could be constructed. So the initial study was circulated. We received several comments. I have circulated for the Planning Commission a document that has the comments, responses, as well as the actual written comments received, and some correspondence from Professor Clark, who was cited in some of the public comments. And basically, the first comment was to the effect that construction of residential units, of each residential unit, results in an increase of 1.6 jobs. So I did some research, and I contacted Dr. Clark, and he said he never said this, and he is not the source for this data, could find no documented source for this information, did an analysis to determine what would result, even if this data was correct. And if you recall, we assumed this project would result in the construction of 30 units over 20 years, and if it created 1.6 jobs per unit, we would assume at least one of those jobs would be absorbed by those 30 units. So we're left with 0.6 times 30, that's about 18 units. If we assume that all 18 of those, sorry, 18 jobs, if we assume that all 18 of those jobs were to commute to the city and distributed those in proportion to the existing commute to the city, you'd find that there is an extremely small percentage of the commute trips that would be coming to the city, it wouldn't even show up in a numeric analysis using our standard methodology. using our standard methodology. So we are not convinced that construction of residential units would create such a large increase in jobs. And the other issue is whether the project would create a jobs-housing imbalance, because we're providing housing, and if the housing creates more jobs, then you'd think that there would be an imbalance in jobs-housing. Well, as I mentioned earlier, there are too few units that could be evolved to create a noticeable jobs-housing difference. We're talking about thousands of units and thousands of jobs, and we've only got 30 houses and 1.6 times 30 houses. So we could find no documentation that more jobs are created than housing, and we believe that providing more housing would likely slightly improve the jobs-housing balance because we're housing poor and jobs-rich in this community. Another comment was that the inclusionary housing fee would drive up the price of market-rate housing, and that would have consequences ranging from more people having to commute, less people being able to afford these units, therefore they would have to commute, and there are various different comments that result from this primary comment. Well, we don't believe that the entire fee would be added to the cost of the sales price of a housing unit. Developers are in competition, developers selling properties are in competition with developers or houses for sale in other areas as well. They aren't free to raise prices as much as they like. If they were, they would have already raised the prices because they're out to make the maximum profit that they can. In addition, the $17,800 in lieu fee is a very small percentage of the cost of a house in this area, and that fee is far smaller than the market fluctuations that are occurring just in the cost of housing that occur without any interference from an inclusionary housing fee. Another comment that was made at the public hearing was that there would be a density bonus of 30%, and this results in more housing that should be evaluated in the initial study. Well, there is no density bonus proposal in the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Amendment, so this does not result in any additional impacts, and it doesn't need to be studied in the initial study. So I conclude that the Planning Commission and public comments were solicited. We did summarize those comments. Those comments did not result in us making any major changes to the analysis and conclusions in the initial study. The project is still eligible for a mitigated negative declaration. I have with me Mr. Stephen Folsditch. He's representing Housing and Redevelopment, and he's available here to provide details on the project proposal, and both of us here would be able to answer questions after this presentation, and we're going to switch right now.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Welcome, Mr. Folsditch.
Thank you. I am Stephen Folsditch. I'm the city's Housing Program Supervisor. I've been involved with this Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Amendment for a couple of years, ever since City Council initiated the request to make some revisions to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. The adopted Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, it was adopted in 2004. It only applies currently to projects of 10 or more units. It applies to both condo conversions and new developments. It does not apply to rental projects at all. It's only ownership. There is a 15% inclusionary requirement, and those inclusionary units need to be affordable to middle income. This is quite a difference from other inclusionary ordinances in the state. In fact, there's well over 100 jurisdictions in the state that have inclusionary ordinances. Most of them require low and moderate income inclusionary units. And the council and Planning Commission, when we first started this, made a real break from the traditional approach, and that was to target this to middle-income households. One of the things that made this ordinance more palatable to the development community when it was adopted was that the 15% inclusionary units were entitled to a density bonus by right. So if you had a project zoned for 20 units, then there's a 15% inclusionary requirement, which would be three units. So three of the 20 would have to be affordable, but actually, the ordinance says, no, you can build the 20 as market rate, and you get a density bonus for three more units, a 15% density bonus. And there is an option to pay an in lieu fee rather than build the units on site, but the in lieu fee is designed to really represent the cost of subsidizing a unit down to the middle-income level, and it was meant to make the units, building the units on site more attractive to the developer than paying the in lieu fee. Council was concerned that the inclusionary ordinance, though, did not apply to the majority of projects before them, and this was a couple of years after the adoption of the ordinance, and they had some experience, and they saw projects coming before them, particularly condo conversion projects, which were two, three, four, six, seven, up to nine units that weren't being required to conform to the inclusionary requirements. And so one of the statistics that we provided to council was that of the 18 condo conversion projects that were approved in 2006 and 2007, 14 of those projects were two to four units, and all of the projects and all of the 59 units therein were exempt from the current ordinance. And this just shows that, as I said, most of them were, let's see, most of them were very small units, very small projects. As I said, 14 of the 18 were two, three, or four units. This change has a long history. The council referred the matter to the Housing Policy Steering Committee, which comprised three members of the Planning Commission and three members of City Council. And the idea was that this project would have minimum impacts, these changes, so that it could be done quickly, which is a relative term, I guess, because we've been at it for quite a while, but still, the idea was that it would be outside of planned Santa Barbara process because it wouldn't involve major changes to the city's zoning ordinance. The Housing Policy Steering Committee met twice, made recommendations to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission made recommendations to council, and that was, those recommendations including lowering the threshold to two units and requiring a 10% inclusionary for five to nine units. And as I'll tell you, that recommendation by Planning Commission, we actually lowered that from 10% to 5%. So any in lieu fee has been cut in half, and the reason for that is to make the project so that there would be no requirement for adding a unit to these projects of two through nine units. 5% of nine units is 0.45 of a unit, and that's less than half, and so there would be no requirement for an additional unit to be included, just the payment of 5% of the in lieu fee for each unit. So council referred the item to Ordinance Committee, and then it returned to council. There were some more sweeping changes that Planning Commission and the Housing Policy Steering Committee and Ordinance Committee recommended to council. That included increasing the inclusionary percentage from 15 to 20% in some of areas. Council decided, no. Let's, the better place for that would be planned Santa Barbara, the planning process, rather than this quick amendment. So we took that out of these and also lowered the inclusionary requirement for two through nine units from 10% to 5%, which is what's before you now. So there's no requirement to add a unit and no density bonus at all, even if a person had an eight-unit project and said, I'd rather build the unit, I was going to build an affordable unit anyway, so I won't pay the in lieu fee, I'll build the unit. Well, they are not entitled then with their eight units of zoning to build nine units. They could make one of the eight affordable, or they could apply for a density bonus through the regular discretionary review process that would come through Planning Commission, but there's no guarantee at all. Then council referred it back to Ordinance Committee for drafting, and it went back to council for adoption in September 2008. And at that time, it had been on a vote of six to one by council. It was approved to be introduced, and at the hearing for adoption, there was procedural concerns, there were procedural concerns raised by a member of the public about the fact that the changes, that there had been changes to the ordinance after Planning Commission had last seen it. And that was true. The scope of the ordinance had been reduced, but we didn't come back to Planning Commission, and the city attorney felt that it would be prudent to do that, and that's why we're before you today, to show you the changes. There were also concerns raised about the environmental review process that had occurred, and so that process was looked at again, and we have now completed a mitigated negative declaration, and the PC is being asked to make a recommendation to council to, that council adopt these changes. Here's a summary of all of the ordinance revisions before you. Lower the threshold to two units. Apply an in lieu fee of $17,800 for each unit in projects of two through nine units. Except, in projects of two through four units, in new construction projects, exempt the first unit, so that in a two-unit project of new construction, there would be a total in lieu fee for one of those units, and that would be $17,800. For three units, it would be twice the $17,000, $17,800, and for four units, it would be three times. That applies to new construction projects. This exemption does not apply to condo conversions. Council specifically said, no, even small condo conversions should pay the in lieu fee for each converted unit. Also, as your staff report indicates, we're recommending expansion of allowable uses of in lieu fees, and one of these uses, it'd be a small portion of the fees, but it's a crucial use. As you know, the city's density bonus and inclusionary housing affordability standards are for middle-income units. Currently, the city's redevelopment agency funding pays for the staffing to enforce the affordability conditions on all of the projects. However, we are not allowed to use redevelopment agency funds for anything other than low-income and moderate-income housing, which is 90% of the housing, but still, we will need to use another source of funds, and that for monitoring compliance of the 350 or so ownership units that we have. As you know, the city does a very aggressive job. We have a full-time staff person monitoring compliance of our affordability conditions, but it would take either the use of a portion of the collected in lieu fees, or we'll have to go to general, the use of general funds, which, as you know, are under a lot of constraints. So I'm just making a plea, I guess, that the, to understand that the in lieu fees that are collected through this project will be put to very good use, including the monitoring of compliance of all of our affordable housing ownership projects. Another change that was made to, based on the request from employers who are considering building employer-sponsored housing, was rather than requiring, or if a project, instead of providing 15% middle income, provides 30% upper-middle income, then those projects could be exempt from the ordinance as well. Also, for smaller projects like two, three, or four units, this would delay the payment of the in lieu fee until just prior to occupancy for these smaller developments. The thought is that some of them will be mom-and-pop developers, and this will enable them to pay right before occupancy rather than during the construction period. And then the last one, which I skipped by, was the effect of data of the ordinance, which is to apply the changes to projects that have not yet received their subdivision approval. This is new this week. I just wanted to give staff's response to some of the concerns that have been expressed. One is that inclusionary leads to densification. Well, a big thing that I want to say is that both Paseo Nuevo and Chapala 1 were approved prior to the inclusionary housing ordinance. The inclusionary housing ordinance was not a factor that led to the density of those For instance, Paseo Chapala was zoned for 17 units. If the inclusionary ordinance had been in effect, the 15% would have required three inclusionary units, and those three could have been density bonus units, so that would have meant that it could have been a 20-unit project instead of 17. The project was approved for 29 units with 12 density bonus units instead of three, and that was a density bonus of 70%. So the inclusionary ordinance is not what applied at the time. It was not what, you know, the density bonus was way beyond that. So I guess I'm, it's another plea, don't look at those projects and associate them with inclusionary because they're not. And another thing about the inclusionary leads to densification, these, we're only looking at the proposed changes to the ordinance, and those changes do not provide for any density bonus by right. Let's see, looks like I have to go to the next slide here. Another concern expressed is that the in lieu fee will be a hardship on smaller projects. Well, with, as I just mentioned, projects of two through four new units, the first unit would be exempt, and so a two-unit project would really only be paying half of the in lieu fee for each of the two units because one of the units is exempt, so that would be $8,900 per unit. Even a four-unit project would be paying $13,400 per unit because you'd be only paying an in lieu fee for three of the units. The other thing is that many of the projects that this is going to apply to aren't new construction, they're condo conversions, and in those projects, there's a huge profit potential for the developer. They don't have to put in a lot of development costs. They do some changes, provide more storage and spruce up the units, and then they can sell them individually, and this in lieu fee would cut into the profit, but that, I think, is going to be, you know, a much larger project profit potential than new construction projects potentially. Another concern, and, excuse me, Mr. Berman already responded to this, is that inclusionary requirements causes the prices of new housing to increase. And I'll just say again that I agree with Mr. Berman's assessment. Developers sell a unit for what they can sell it for, and they can't lower, they don't lower the price if their costs go down, and they can't raise the price if the costs go up because they're competing with existing units in the city that have been completed in prior years and units outside of the city. So adding this fee, if anything, I think an economist would probably say that this would put a downward pressure, a slight downward pressure on the price of land, but not necessarily to increase the costs. So reasons to recommend that council approve this ordinance, these are relatively minor changes to the ordinance. They started out as a little larger, but they have been scaled back from those that the Planning Commission previously recommended. These changes will result in the requirement for a monetary in lieu fee payment only, no requirement for no units, no density bonus by right. The in lieu fees will. The in lieu fees will be put to good use and may very well save city general fund dollars in this time of very tight budget. And council has already introduced the revised ordinance, just as you're seeing now, on a six-to-one vote. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fossett. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, and we do have some speaker slips here. Our first speaker is Mr. Jim Caldwell. And if you'd just come up to the front, sir, and identify yourself, and take two minutes to speak, and the speaker will be followed by Kathy McCammon.
Jim Caldwell, representing the Santa Barbara Board of Realtors. Madam Chair and members of the commission, I'm going to resubmit our letter that we submitted last time for your consideration. Will not take a lot of your time. I do go back to, I fully disagree with the presentation relative to dropping the threshold below five units for two reasons. First of all, you're going into what is generally considered as single-family development because, from a lending standpoint. And the majority of those developers, frankly, are working on a very tight budget. It really doesn't matter whether you're charging them $17,000 or $8,000 in addition. It will cause a lot of these units to not be built. It will also cause the prices to go up, because any cost that's created in that causes prices to go up. So if the developer doesn't feel like they can get the price, they just won't build the unit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Kathy McCammon, followed by Miki Flax, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy McCammon, and I have been representing Allied Neighborhoods Association. As you could tell from our previous correspondence, our main problem is really with the existing inclusionary ordinance. We're very concerned that this amendment will just make things worse. If there are problems with one, this makes it worse. And this has the problem that it will fall on the small market rate units. It is very disconcerting to hear that anything that is characterized as minor can now happen outside of Plan Santa Barbara. We see this whole inclusionary issue, or we've been told it will be par to Plan Santa Barbara. And so, with any changes to it should be par of the Plan Santa Barbara process. And one of the reasons is that the Plan Santa Barbara process will deal with affordable by design, and hopefully we'll have some regulations for smaller units. But apparently, this item has, it's been determined that it needs to be done now to capture lost fees. As we recall, the problem really was with projects that could have done 10 units, but instead, to escape the inclusionary problem, they decided to do less units, eight, nine, whatever. Now here's where we see that the, this whole discussion of smaller units and affordable by design units would come in. That, in the future, if that happened, that would present this, prevent the problem of having fewer big units instead of the 10, and thus escaping the inclusionary. However, in the meantime, we would urge a temporary compromise. We would suggest that you might look at only applying the in lieu fee to projects within the six-to-nine unit range. While this may sound arbitrary, it does address this problem of the bigger lots that could have 10 or more doing a few less. So this way, the in lieu fees would be captured from them. This would address part of our concern about the affordability by design small units, and it would not make units more expensive. I must say, I'm somewhat confused by how, what the $8,000 applied to, if that was just to the other, the market rate units or what? Because we're talking about a $17,000 some odd cost. And I guess that's pretty much, it, what we really want is to not penalize the very small projects and somehow allow a compromise to be done on this in lieu thing. But really, it should be all par to Plan Santa Barbara. And we would urge you in the future, that a lot of these things that somehow are minor, that they ought to wait. I mean, that assumes, of course, we will get to Plan Santa Barbara. But that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCammon. Miki Flax, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. It's the first time I ever heard that jobs create housing, I mean, that housing creates jobs. It's everybody else I've ever read says the reverse, that jobs create, the creation of jobs creates a need for housing, not the reverse. But be that as it may, we're on inclusionary housing, which by the way is included in Plan Santa Barbara as a principle. So the principle of inclusionary housing is an important one. It's a way of extracting some measure of responsibility from developers to the community, just like can be fees, asking them to pay for sidewalks, lights, et cetera. It's new only in the sense that it refers to housing rather than to those other things. And initially, was greatly opposed by the building industry. I think they saw it as creeping socialism, but they have come to accept it and work with it, and it is now, as Stephen pointed out, generally accepted in scores of communities in California. I have often been an advocate for affordable housing for middle-income folks. In this community, you need an income of about $200,000 combined income for a family of four, to even to be able to purchase a first-time home in Santa Barbara. And that represents a, some part of our community that is forced by those prices to live elsewhere. So what is a source for housing for some of those folks? Housing for those folks needs to be subsidized, apparently, much like housing for low-income folks. And the in lieu fees from an inclusionary ordinance, combined with a housing trust fund that is ways of leveraging the funds, are seen as a way of providing a fund for the development of some of this needed housing for middle and upper-middle income people. And then, what do we get if we don't have this inclusionary? Well, if we don't have it, it simply allows a market rate developer to do what he or she wants with no responsibility, to build only for those who can afford upscale housing, such as the project that you approved earlier. It seems like a very nice project, but what is it in fact doing for the housing needs of the community of Santa Barbara? Not much. If this came along a little later, and this inclusionary ordinance were amended, they would at least be forced to contribute to a fund that might create some housing for the people who work here. I also urge you to remember that this was, both the inclusionary housing ordinance and the amendment were initially created in response to condo conversions that were seen as literally as putting people on the street, simply for the profits of those who owned the previous rentals. So in a way, inclusionary housing, the requirement for inclusionary payments and housing, was also seen as a way of perhaps getting the owners of those rental units to think twice, that maybe it wasn't all unalloyed profit, but that it would cost them something if they wanted to throw those folks out on the street because they couldn't afford the conversion. This was part of the motivation for creating the ordinance, and I think it's part of the motivation for creating the amendment which reduces the numbers involved.
About 30 seconds more.
Pardon me?
About 30 seconds.
Okay, that's just where I am. I just was summing up, that it's really a question of, does this amendment help us meet the needs of Santa Barbara housing, and does it provide some measure of justice for our community? I think it does. Thank you.
Thank you. And then with that, the item is to the commission. Any comments? Oh, Mr. Bartlet, good.
I had a question for either Michael or Stephen. It was mentioned in the presentation that if this policy is modified or adopted over the next 20 years, it would only generate 30 new residential units? How did you come up with that, or what's the thinking? I don't understand how you came to that number, so.
We did an analysis of prior approvals over the last 10 years in the range of two to nine units. We found that within the 10-year period, there would be, I think, 1.2 or 1.1 ratio. And so we looked at the last six years in which more development occurred, and that provided a number of 1.6 ratio. So we used the 1.6 because that would give us a worst-case scenario. You multiply, we assume the general plan time horizon of 20 years, and 20 times 1.6 is 30.
Okay.
Did you get that? Can I, Madam Chair and Commissioner Bartlet?
Oh, jump right in, please.
The 1.1 and 1.6 was the number of housing units, and basically that was based on the number of housing units that could be subsidized using the collected in lieu fees. So, an in lieu fee, I think, is, the total amount of an in lieu fee is $358,000, something, I think that's what it is. That's the difference between what it costs to build a unit and the affordable sale price. And so by collecting 30, let's just say $360,000, you could build one unit of additional, using that subsidy. It takes 20 in lieu fees, because the in lieu fee is only 5% for each unit. It's a 5% inclusionary requirement. So if you had a total of 20, of projects that had 20 units in two, three, through nine units, so if you had those projects that did 20 units, the total would be 20 times $17,800, which I think would be close to $360,000, and that would enable the development of one affordable unit. So basically, we divided the number of units in projects of two through nine units that we expect over the next 20 years by 20, and said that that's probably going to result in about 30 units, worst case. Now, that assumes that every time we collect $360,000 in in lieu fees, that's going to generate a brand-new unit, and that may not be. You know, it could be used to buy down affordability of existing units. It could be units that were going to be built anyway as market rate, but now can be built as affordable. So in other words, I think Mr. Berman was saying that this is the worst-case scenario, which they assumed in terms of the impact from these in lieu fees. Does that answer the question?
That somewhat answers it. I mean, that's, the 30 unit then is the assumption that you've taken all the fees and you've totally paid for building the units, not just buying it down to an affordable level.
No, actually, Commissioner Bartlet, it does just assume the payment of the fee because you can, let's say you could sell that unit for $250,000, but it costs over $600,000 to build or so. So it is just the subsidy to make that unit affordable and therefore feasible to build.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Then we'll be into comments. I heard Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to comment on this issue of the 1.6, which, as I understand, it came from a news report on the presentation that Dr. Clark made as an update of the RIGS study. And the reporter sort of extrapolated it from a graph that Dr. Clark had up, and he subsequently did say that that is, at least to someone questioning him on that, that it is about right. Last August, knowing that UCSB uses a multiplier factor and considering the impact of each new student, each new professor, I called Bill Watkins, the director of the Economic Forecast Project at UCSB, and asked him if anybody had looked at what the multiplier factors for new luxury condos. And he said that no one has studied exactly that, but he gave me a set of four, but he said are very rough figures. And I believe I shared them with the Planning Commission. I don't think I shared them with staff, but I will when I have the opportunity. Don't remember the exact numbers, but it was based on the income of the new household. And the higher the income, the more new jobs were created, and income of $250,000 or over, which is what is needed to buy one of the really expensive luxury units that have been built in recent times, could create as much as three new jobs. Yes, new jobs as jobs, with new businesses in a community, create new jobs. But so do new houses, simply by the fact that there are more people living in the community, and they need more dry cleaners, and they need more restaurants, and they need more doctors, and plumbers, and whatever. You know, it's just a fraction of each of those things per household. But there is a multiplier factor for new housing. And I'm going to vote for this amendment because it does provide the opportunity, possibly, to build some affordable units. We've run out of money for that purpose. And it also possibly will be used to buy down existing housing, which I think is a very effective way of creating affordable housing. I hope that everyone understands that there are new families in a community, just understand, you know, you think about a community that grows, there are going to be new people coming in, there are going to be not only the jobs that they are coming to take, but they will be creating new jobs themselves by their presence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lodge. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly agree with the concept of inclusionary fees. I'm concerned about, and I think that the, ideally, the fees are surgical and nimble and are accomplishing the goals, and not doing harm to, and doing as little harm as possible. And I mentioned at our environmental hearing, my fogged memory of the, of an inclusionary requirement that was removed now 15 years ago, which I think ought to be reconsidered because it actually, it applies more closely to, it hits the problem, I think, more accurately. And that is that there was an inclusionary fee on commercial square footage. And we've talked about how commercial development is actually the one that is creating housing. So I'm disappointed that that's not part of the package. I think that that's one place where, without dispute, that that's a place where fees could be gathered, and that little harm would be done, as I would see it, on the housing market. I'm worried about, there's been conversation already about small units. What about a, and then you get into the little R3, in the R3 zone, you get these 50-foot-wide lots with, that's got enough room, maybe they're seven, eight thousand square foot lots, and one or two two-bedroom units could be put in the back, very small ones. And when a unit gets small enough, I think that a $17,000 hit, and I appreciate now that on two-unit projects, it would be an $8,000 hit. So there's been an accommodation made there. But I do see, and then who was it, Ms. McCammon, who made the point? What if we had had a project that had a bunch of little units, had more units? little units, had more units, but they were little units? I think there needs to be an accommodation in there somewhere for small units, cutting some slack, maybe even encouraging people to develop small units. And so that either, it's the inclusionary fee is on a square-foot basis, for example, would be one way perhaps to attack it, or exempting units below a certain size. I don't know exactly, but as I said, my worry is that we would end up discouraging development, and that was, of course, Mr. Caldwell's point, the Board of Realtors representative. Another one is neighborhoods. And when I think about, for example, Lowest to Voluntario Street, or near the freeway, or places where, which are not upscale neighborhoods, a unit there is, doesn't, it's like that's getting treated the same as a unit on Chapala Street. And that bothers me, that if somebody who's, you've got a house that's falling apart down there, somebody wants to tear it down, build, perhaps build that house and a unit behind it, or, and again, we'd get some help out of the two-unit, or two-to-four-unit exemption. But those projects are cut much closer to the bone than, I'll just use the Chapala archetype. So that's another area where I'm concerned that we don't have any, I mean, that a unit is being treated the same on Voluntario as a unit on Chapala. And finally, I see just what's going on right now, where I'm sure we're seeing very few building permits being pulled for condo projects right now. Just isn't happening. And I would, I could see that every bit of encouragement in times of distress, say, okay, we can call timeout, like we do with interest rates. I mean, I've analogized this to development fees over the years, where I've complained about how the development fees that you pay to get a permit in the city were too low 12, 14 years ago, that, but the city ought to have the ability to be a little bit flexible because we want some development here, and we want these units to be built. So maybe in terrible times, there may be a way to say, timeout on that Voluntario project, let's not charge it now, let's, but let's, by all means, when things get going again, which they inevitably will, that they get, that the fee then be livened back up. So those are the concerns I have about it. So I'm, I know, I want to support an inclusion, I do support the concept of inclusionary. I think that what we have here is still a little bit clumsy, so, and I really think the commercial element. I ask that that at least message be delivered up to council to perhaps add that element on. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Fossett.
I did have a response to Commissioner White. Should I wait until all of the comments have been made?
Let me just ask until, you know, does anyone have any other comments?
Right.
Oh, okay. You're ready to comment? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, all right. That's fine, Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My head is spinning up here. I'm about to agree with Commissioner White and Kathy McCammon, and so I, I don't know. Something in the water, I think, but, anyway, I agree with the notion of what's before us. We all want more affordable housing or workforce housing in this town. We know that that's what's missing, but I'm not convinced that this is the mechanism to get us there. I feel like this has been crafted over, what, the last year, two years? Looking in the rearview mirror, and if we haven't noticed, the whole world has changed. You know, we're worried about the horses getting out of the barn. Well, they're already gone, and the barn's blown down. So I'm, even if we implement this now with the statistics you're putting forward, I would rather wait a year or two years and really integrate this with Plan Santa Barbara so that it's thought out. The most we're going to lose in a one- or two-year increment is one and a half or maybe two potential units, and yet we have to create a whole administrative workforce to spend these funds that we think we might collect. So I think it's a bigger discussion, and I think the community responsibility for providing more affordable housing lies much beyond trying to subsidize it by those that are providing the housing. I think it's those that aren't providing the housing that are creating more of the problem. And I think there's a, there's got to be a bigger base out there that we can tap to really get where we want to go. And I, I'm worried that we're really going after the wrong group, and I think the unintended consequence of this is, I mean, there's hardly anything for the Building Department to review now, there's hardly anybody coming forward with projects, and I think this is going to even slow down the little trickle that we have now. So I'm really afraid of what this is going to do, and I think it's part of a bigger discussion, and I think there's a better way to craft this and integrate it and do it in a way that actually incentivizes what we want rather than penalizing those that are coming forward trying to provide housing. So I think it's the, it's the stick rather than the carrot, and we need to really be looking at carrots right now. So as much as I wanted to do something to help the situation, I'm not convinced that this item right now, giving this economy and everything else that's going on, is even going to make a bit of difference other than slow the Building Department down more. So I'm really worried about it, and I'd like to hear from others and see if there's some other way that we can turn this around. And that's why I really think it's part of the bigger discussion, to try and pull it out separate and rush it. I don't know why we're rushing it. Nothing's going to be happening anyway, and this will guarantee that even less happens. So I want affordable housing, but this isn't the mechanism to get us there for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thompson.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, with all due respect to staff, I agree pretty much with what Commissioner Bartlet just said. I didn't realize that he was going to say that. I figured I'd be the only guy here. But I am speaking for those who think this isn't the way the city should be proceeding right now. We're in the midst of this general plan update, and I think this topic needs a lot more discussion than simply trying to figure out an exaction to add on to small building projects in town. We've all talked about the unintended consequences of some of these attempts to get more affordable housing carved into market-rate housing, and the unintended consequences have been that it's not what we anticipated happening. We're just inducing more big market-rate projects. And I think we should be looking for a policy that encourages and rewards the type of housing stock we want people to be building rather than putting a tax on them to add more cost. And Steve, you said that builders can't raise the prices if the costs go up. Well, you know, using your own words there, you're actually supporting what Commissioner Bartlet just said, and that is that as the costs go up, we keep adding more burden on them. Pretty soon, since they can't raise the prices, they aren't going to build. And we're looking to build housing, but now you're asking for the use of these funds not to build housing but to pay for a general fund administrative support, and that's not going to build housing. In fact, I wonder if it's even appropriate to exact somebody for supposedly building housing and then use it for general fund administrative support. So the other thing that makes me a little suspicious is the way you all went back and forth on calculating the amount of the exaction. Over the last couple of years, first it was going to be calculated one way, and then we looked at it, whoa, that might raise the price too much, so we recalculated another way, and then the market went down. Now we recalculated back another way. That gives me a little suspicion that we're trying to achieve a certain number that we have in mind rather than that there's a legitimate connection between the formula and the problem. That makes me uncomfortable. So I, my personal recommendation to council would be that we hold this off and analyze it a little more thoroughly than we're doing while we're doing this general plan update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. Any other comments? Oh, mine, Madam Chair. I'm with Mr. Bart, I'm short. I'm with Mr. Bartlet and Mr. Thompson. I think it should go with Plan Santa Barbara. I think just, pretty much a no-brainer for that. We are trying so hard to do, to find housing, and I'm looking at incentive versus penalty. So here's hoping. Yes, Mr. Bartlet.
I mean, just sort of a closing thought. I mean, if there was ever a need that I think needs to get pushed ahead of Plan Santa Barbara, it would be a mechanism to incentivize rental housing in the interim. People aren't buying right now, especially in a down market. So anything that we could do in this community to bolster building some rental stock, which really hasn't happened in any sizable quantity in decades, would go a long way toward dealing with this issue, much more so than focusing on what few market-rate condominium units might be built. That's not even going to make a dent. So, you know, if there was something we could do ahead of Plan Santa Barbara that could dovetail with it and not preclude what we're trying to accomplish, but a way to incentivize getting rentals, that would, I think, be a step in the right direction. And other communities are doing this, so, and I'm working in those, and we're doing a lot of rental projects, but unfortunately, we're not doing them in Santa Barbara.
Actually, I do want to say that I did speak with someone who has a large, nice piece of property, I think it's on Anacapa Street, who is planning a rental project, was originally planning a condo project, but is planning to do all rental, which thrilled me. So I agree with you there. It would really help. So that being said, do you need anything from us? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to mention, thank you, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to mention in response to Commissioner White's comment about encouraging smaller units. The existing ordinance actually does have a graduated reduction of in-lu fee based on the size of the units, and units under 1,700, between 1,400 and 1,700 square feet, get a reduced in-lu fee, and then the reduction increases, and in fact, there's a 30% reduction in the in-lu fee for any units below 800 square feet. So, and it goes from 15% reduction to 30%. So I just wanted to, that's not a change to the ordinance, it's already in there, so I didn't mention it before. But that concludes my comment.
Thank you. With the, with the, with the change in the school district's policy, so that people who commute from out of town with their children into Santa Barbara to go to our city schools, that no longer being in effect, rental housing is going to, is really going to experience more than a renaissance here. And those families are going to be needing places to live because they prefer to educate their children near where their jobs are. So it is really a great need right now, and I really do hope it gets looked at closely. Thank you. Mr. White.
Could you refer me to that size area just so that I can?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioner White, it is, it's on page, whoops, page eight in, in the draft revised ordinance, and let me just see what section that is.
I see it, it's D, isn't it? Just the reduction for smaller units.
Yes, that's right. It's under 28.43.070D.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vincent.
I'd like to make two comments. First, to address Commissioner Thompson's concern about the changing structure of the fee that staff has been dealing with over the last two years. While the Nexus study for the inclusionary housing ordinance itself justified and supported the full freight fee, $354,000 per project over, as far as the 15% inclusionary support, the calculation that is occurring in this proposal of a 5% fee is eminently supported by the Nexus study. What you're seeing in the shifting calculation is just simply a political reality of what is palatable in this market, addressing all of the concerns that you're, that you're expressing as to how this will affect projects, what will it do to the nature of the projects and those kinds of things. So while I want to assure the commission that there is ample support legally to have an inclusionary fee even on these lower projects, that that is why you're seeing this other calculation. And in some way, and in some measure, it's an example of how this problem is just, quite honestly, bigger than this particular measure, but this is at least some measure of, and one approach to addressing it. The second comment I want to make is just to today's action is a recommendation to the council regarding the ordinance, and so just to focus the commission's attention on actually coming to a recommendation regarding the ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vincent. Mr. White.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to ask Mr. Vincent something to that effect, that we are supposed to, this is, this is coming in an unusual path, isn't it? Where usually the ordinance would come to us, and we'd chew on it, and we'd negotiate with staff, and then we'd be sending something up to council after we had worked on it for a while. That would be a common pattern for the crafting of an ordinance. What's happened now is that council's crafted an ordinance, and then, you know, as a, there was a sense that we'll better come back to the Planning Commission for review before final action is taken. Was that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner White is correct in that the typical approach, particularly on zoning ordinances such as this, is for the Planning Commission to mull over a concept. Then, once those recommendations have been created, it is brought to the ordinance committee for consideration and ultimately to the council for introduction and adoption. The government code is what requires us to have this hearing as well as the initial comment hearing. The government code does anticipate an ordinance to change over time even after it leaves the planning commissions and goes through the ordinance committee and city council. So we are actually, this hearing is anticipated in the, in the government code, and we're coming back because the city council made substantive changes, not significant, but did make substantive changes to the ordinance after the planning commission had had an opportunity to comment on the subject. The government code expects the city to bring this item back to you for comments on those changes as well as the ordinance as a whole, and then it will be, this, it will return back to the city council for their deliberation. So this, this hearing, while it's not the city's typical standpoint because it's not, it's not common for the ordinance to change substantively after it leaves the planning commission. Typically, the city council takes the advice of the planning commission and doesn't make changes. In this case, there were some changes, and so here we are again.
Thank you. And then in order to get to a recommendation to council, I'm thinking that, I think we have different, slightly different, or significantly different perhaps, I hear Ms. Lodge is supportive of this draft, and I'm not supportive of this draft. I have some specific suggestions to council, which I would like at least to be in the minutes that go forward, and then I'm hearing that there's a majority that is not going to agree with this draft. So I may not agree with the comments that I have as well, but I would like the minutes at least to reflect that I think that the, that an inclusionary ordinance ought to exempt very small units from inclusionary fees, and I won't, I won't try to get more specific than that, but just to say exempt very small units, and that there should be a potential exemption in a blighted area. I'll just use, try and use unsubtle words. I think there ought to be a commercial in-lu fee. I think there ought to be an exemption in times of economic stress. And... And I certainly support the condo conversion inclusionary fee, and I support many of the elements of the inclusionary ordinance that's before us today. So, but those are elements that I would, as I say, I would like to at least have in the minutes for consideration as time goes by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Thompson.
Well, Madam Chair, if it will help to move things along, I would make a motion to the effect that the planning commission recommend to the city council not to take any action on this proposed amendment, and refer it for further analysis, including some of the proposed concepts that Commissioner White has brought forth, and in parallel with and part of the general plan update process.
I would second that.
Thank you. And I think Ms. Lodge, you have?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. After listening to the comments of my colleagues here, I think I'm going to vote for the motion. I have a lot of problems with the inclusionary ordinance as a whole. I was only speaking to this particular set of amendments before. I don't think it's achieving what it has set out to do, which is to improve the jobs housing balance. We're just not getting enough affordable housing out of it. And we don't need more luxury housing in Santa Barbara. We do need workforce housing. And as I've said before, somehow, we've got to figure out a way to finance that housing, because it's clearly clear that the private market can't do it.
Thank you. And I do want to add an encouragement of rental housing as well, development of rental housing as well. And with that, we'll call the question. Let's see. We have a motion. Mr. Bartlett, who's the motion maker, please?
Thompson.
Oh, Mr. Thompson made the motion. Second is Mr. Bartlett. Okay, I just want to make sure it's clear for the record. Okay, all those in favor of sending this along as it is?
I wasn't to motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. Restate the motion, please.
Motion was to recommend to the council not to take any action on the proposed amendment, but to delay it for further analysis, including some of the items that Commissioner White had mentioned, and rental housing, and do it as part of the general plan update process in parallel with that process.
Thank you very much for restating the motion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed?
I think I'm going to abstain. What I would rather, if you were to remove the Plan Santa Barbara element, and just say further analysis, I would feel comfortable with the motion, but I don't, I think, have council may want to push it ahead of Plan Santa Barbara, and that would be acceptable to me.
All right. So one abstention. Okay, all right. And with that, that's our recommendation. All right, our next item is the application of Geralry McConne, agent for the Tobes Group, 400 block of South Fairview Avenue, the airport facilities, airport and, excuse, oh, yeah, we'll give a chance. Should we take a little break, maybe? Let's take a, we'll be taking, we'll be taking a five-minute, 10-minute recess while these nice folks set up for their presentation. Thank you.
How are you doing?
(Music)
Don't you know? Don't say nothing bad about my baby. He's good, he's good to me. And it's all I care about. Oh, no. Don't you tell me my baby's just a playboy. Don't you tell me my baby's just a playboy. He's my guy. He's true, he's true to me. So, girl, you better shut your mouth. Everybody says he's lazy, but not when he's kissing me. Everybody says he's crazy, but sure he's crazy, crazy about me, oh, yeah. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. Oh, no. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. I love him so. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. And don't you know? Don't say nothing bad about my baby. He's good, he's good to me. And it's all I care about. (Music) Don't say nothing bad about my baby. Oh, no. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. I love him so. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. And don't you know? Don't say nothing bad about my baby. He's good, he's good to me. And it's all I care about. (Music) Don't say nothing bad about my baby. Oh, no. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. I love him so. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. And don't you know? Don't say nothing bad about my baby. He's true, he's true to me. So, girl, you better shut your mouth. Oh, no. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. Oh, no. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. 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 And don't you know? Don't say nothing bad about my baby. He's true, he's true to me. So, girl, you better shut your mouth. Oh, no. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. Oh, no. Don't say nothing bad about my baby. 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 This following program is dedicated to the city and people of San Francisco, who may not know it, but they are beautiful, and so is their city. This is a very personal song, so if the viewer cannot understand it, particularly those of you who are European residents, save up all your bread and fly Translob Airways to San Francisco, USA. Then maybe you'll understand the song. It will be worth it, if not for the sake of this song, but for the sake of your own peace of mind. (Music) Strobe lights beam, creates dreams. Walls move, minds do dream. On a warm San Franciscan night. Old child, young child, feel alright. On a warm San Franciscan night. Angels sing, leather wings. Jews of blue, harlot Davidson's tree. On a warm San Franciscan night. Old angel, young angel, feel alright. On a warm San Franciscan night. I wasn't born there, perhaps I'll die there. There's no place left to go. San Francisco. Cop's face is filled with hate. Heaven's above, he's on a street called love. When will they ever learn? Old cop, young cop, feel alright. On a warm San Franciscan night. The children are cool, they don't play school. It's an American dream, includes Indians too. (Music) She's Venus in blue jeans. Mona Lisa with a ponytail. She's a walking, talking work of art. She's the girl who stole my heart. My Venus in blue jeans is the Cinderella I adore. She's my very special angel, too. A fairy tale untrue. They say there's seven wonders in the world, but what they say is out of date. There's more than seven wonders in the world. I just met number eight. My Venus in blue jeans is everything I hope she'd be. A teenage goddess from above, and she belongs to me. My Venus in blue jeans is everything I hope she'd be. A teenage goddess from above, and she belongs to me. Shake, 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 shake. Listen, listen while I talk to you. I tell you what we're gonna do. There's a new thing just going around, and I'll tell you what to put in down. Just move your body all around, and just shake. Oh, mama, shake. That's the way to do it. Shake, oh, you're looking good now. Shake, yeah. Shake it like a bowl of soup, and make your body loop-de-loop. Put your hands on your hips, and kind of let your backbone slip. Move your body like a whip, and just shake.
Get her a lot reading stuff like this. It's like...
Yeah, you're looking good now. Shake, don't do it, baby, shake, yeah. Oh.
Freshen her, maybe, after you can't...
Shaking is the latest thing. And if you want to swing, just loosen up them shoulders. And if you want to really roll, you got to do the thing so. Shake the shake with all your might.
Julie, if you decide to do that, I'll bring my arm.
Just make your body loop.
What day was it?
Thank you very much for the little break. And now we will proceed with the application of Geralry McConne, agent for the Tobes Group, for the airport facilities industrial area specific plan coastal overlay that zones general plan designation and public and institutional stuff. So, yes.
I just wanted to say that I did have a brief conversation with Ms. McConne about this project.
Oh, thank you. I had just made a note about ex parte communication and was going to ask. Thank you very much. Anyone else need to disclose? That's very fine. Thank you, Mr. White. And with that, how about a staff report?
Andrew Brumond will be giving the staff report.
Okay. Mr. Brumond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, planning commissioners. The proposed project is at 400 Fairview Avenue, across the street from the recently completed Fairview Corporate Center project. This is the exact same project that we looked at in the environmental hearing back in January, so I'm going to try to go through this quickly. The project consists of two storm drain outfalls, Culvert 1 in a concrete portion of San Pedro Creek, and then Culvert 4 is further down, requires a 250-square-foot riprap and head wall. The riprap wall was designed to Caltrans standards and is sized to maintain the slope of the creek through the rotation of the riprap in toward the storm drain outfall. And the project also involves a habitat restoration of 1,000 square feet, it's four-to-one mitigation for the permanent loss of 250 square feet. This has been decided to include a portion on the opposite bank where they'd be removing a stand of rundo, and the remainder would then be just north and south of the head wall. So as a refresher, the project was originally designed, or in concept, in the Old Town Galita revitalization plan that later became the Fairview Corporate Center project that was approved by the county in 2002, about a month before Galita cityhood. The conditions of approval from that project required roadway improvements to Fairview Avenue, but it did not consider any impacts in the city of Santa Barbara to San Pedro Creek. So that's what brings us here. As you can see here, the Culvert 1 is a proposed outfall, and San Pedro Creek would go in the, where all these cracks that were filled in go right here. Flood control said that using this existing outfall would not be feasible based on flow capacity. And then here's the site plan for Culvert 4 with the two restoration sites on either side. Again, and here's a site photograph of what it looks like currently. You can see where a section of the creek bank is eroding beneath the existing outfall, where it doesn't contour at the same angle, and that's due to scour during high rain events. So staff prepared a mitigated negative declaration for this project that you had held a hearing on on January 22nd. We extended the comment period to 40 days and have since incorporated comments we received from the public. The final MND includes information provided from the archaeological resources survey that was prepared by the applicant, and clarifies mitigation measures based on comments that we received on biological resources, specifically pertaining to bird breeding season, water resources. The Department of Fish and Game wanted a condition that surface flows be diverted if they're present. Normally, San Pedro Creek is dry during the dry season, but this is just an extra condition there. And cultural resources to make clear that a Native American monitor would be on-site during all ground disturbance. The MND concluded that the project would not produce a significant impact with mitigation measures incorporated, and those mitigation measures have been included in the recommended conditions of approval on Exhibit A. The other issue staff identified is consistency with the local coastal plan. Again, same issues. Policy F3 requires projects to preserve culturally sensitive resources. That is being done through the mitigation measures that require a Native American monitor and archaeologist on-site for all ground disturbance, and of course, work would be halted if any discoveries were... Put your hands on your hips, and kinda let your backbone slip. Move your body like a whip, and just shake. Shake. Yeah. Oh.
Freshen up and read the other papers.
Shake. Shake. Listen. Listen while I talk to you. I tell you what we're gonna do. There's a new thing that's going around, and I'll tell you what you're putting down. Just move your body all around, and just shake. Oh, mama, shake. That's the way to do it. Shake. Oh, you're looking good now. Shake, yeah. Shaking like a bowl of soup, and make your body loop-de-loop. Put your hands on your hips, and kinda let your backbone slip. Move your body like a whip, and just shake. Shake. Yeah. Oh.
Freshen up and read the other papers.
Shake. Shake. Listen. Listen while I talk to you. I tell you what we're gonna do. There's a new thing that's going around, and I'll tell you what you're putting down. Just move your body all around, and just shake. Oh, mama, shake. That's the way to do it. Shake. Oh, you're looking good now. Shake, yeah. Shaking like a bowl of soup, and make your body loop-de-loop. Put your hands on your hips, and kinda let your backbone slip. Move your body like a whip, and just shake. Shake. Yeah. Oh.
Freshen up and read the other papers.
Shake. Shake. Listen. Listen while I talk to you. I tell you what we're gonna do. There's a new thing that's going around, and I'll tell you what you're putting down. Just move your body all around, and just shake. Oh, mama, shake. That's the way to do it. Shake. Oh, you're looking good now. Shake, yeah. Shaking like a bowl of soup, and make your body loop-de-loop. Put your hands on your hips, and kinda let your backbone slip. Move your body like a whip, and just shake. Shake. Yeah. Oh.
Freshen up and read the other papers.
Shake. Shake. Listen. Listen while I talk to you. I tell you what we're gonna do. There's a new thing that's going around, and I'll tell you what you're putting down. Just move your body all around, and just shake. Oh, mama, shake. That's the way to do it. Shake. Oh, you're looking good now. Shake, yeah. Shaking like a bowl of soup, and make your body loop-de-loop. Put your hands on your hips, and kinda let your backbone slip. Move your body like a whip, and just shake. Shake. Yeah. Oh.
Freshen up and read the other papers.
Shake. Shake. Listen. Listen while I talk to you. I tell you what we're gonna do. There's a new thing that's going around, and I'll tell you what you're putting down. Just move your body all around, and just shake. Oh, mama, shake. That's the way to do it. Shake. Oh, you're looking good now. Shake, yeah. Shaking like a bowl of soup, and make your body loop-de-loop. Put your hands on your hips, and kinda let your backbone slip. Move your body like a whip, and just shake. Shake. Yeah. Oh.
Freshen up and read the other papers.
Shake. Shake. Listen. Listen while I talk to you. I tell you what we're gonna do. There's a new thing that's going around, and I'll tell you what you're putting down. Just move your body all around, and just shake. Oh, mama, shake. That's the way to do it. Shake. Oh, you're looking good now. Shake, yeah. Shaking like a bowl of soup, and make your body loop-de-loop. Put your hands on your hips, and kinda let your backbone slip. Move your body like a whip, and just shake. Shake. Yeah. Oh.
Freshen up and read the other papers.
Shake. Shake. Listen. Listen while I talk to you. I tell you what we're gonna do. There's a new thing that's going around, and I'll tell you what you're putting down.